I'd call the meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic of which we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, this is a good chair.
Commissioner, all Britton is with us by telephone tonight. We do not have any public comment. We'll move right to the consent agenda. Any questions or concerns for staff?
Make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and second, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item, a special presentation regarding the proposed Eisenhower-McFarland roundabout by Mr. Coon of Call Valley Engineering. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. My name's Brent Coon with Call Valley Engineering. And presentation about, uh, roundabout tonight. See if I can actually manage it. I was told to turn it on even. There it is. So, where are the two streets? It's a very acute angle. Those are one of those things that when you start getting older, like I've noticed hitting that fifty mark, is as I start to turn my head anymore at intersections, I start to hear a couple creaks and pops. It's also not just a thing for, you know, older and aging population, but anyone looking to the right, getting ready to make a left turn, is going to start to have difficulty. So you're trying to look at these things, uh, the rule in traffic engineering is as you approach the intersection, you try and straighten it out for at least the last fifty feet. Well, what that creates here is a really sharp right turn just before you approach the intersection. This ends up being about thirty-five degrees, and it's in that range where it's generally a bad idea to have a standard intersection without a traffic signal or a roundabout. You need to change the geometrics to make it safer. And I apologize, that turned out a little bit smaller than I wanted. Right now, we're looking at a level of service C. C isn't as bad as you would get for your grades at school. You'd think C's bad. C's tolerable, however, it drastically decreases in what you can tolerate as you approach the D and the F. When we're looking in 2039, we know that we're going to be into the F range. It will be unusable by the volumes. So when you start looking at those volumes, we know that we have to do something, and now is the best time because we can improve safety and make those changes beneficial for the future, all of the people who have their days decreased time that they could spend with their family waiting in traffic. Now, what we looked at is the comprehensive plan put together in 2017, and it was adopted by both Junction City and Gary's County. It recognized a need for increased capacity, and really, the do-nothing isn't an option. And the quote from the comprehensive plan is, "A roundabout at Eisenhower and McFarland would slow northbound traffic leading into the Sixth and Eisenhower intersection and improve the visibility of traffic turning off of the intersection." Now, there's a couple things to take away from that. One is, and as you've looked, is that northbound traffic is quick. I was out there, I have a little, uh, speed counter, and it's amazingly quick. What can you do to slow down traffic? Well, unless you really want to have a police officer sitting out there all the time. I was a police officer for ten years. It just doesn't work that way. You can't be there all of the time to enforce the speed limit. So we try and put in something that slows people down by design, so we can build a situation that makes it safer. So we can actually affect two intersections, one McFarland and Eisenhower, and then to the north, we can have the traffic going slower. And anytime you can slow down the traffic, when two things hit, flight school, they tell you to hit the cheapest, softest thing as slowly as possible. And when we're dealing with cars, well, we want, the only thing we can do is slow people down, so that when they are involved in a crash, it's less severe and people are less likely to get hurt. And then the, the second thing is improving the visibility of traffic turning off of McFarland onto Eisenhower, as I discussed before. So there are multiple reasons why a roundabout was suggested during, in the plan. What can it do? Well, safety right off the top, it has several safety effects. First of all, we get that benefit of being able to have better visibility. The other part is that safety, that distance getting back and turned right, you want, when you go through there, I had the urge just to go right through because of the way that it turned. You kind of just want to go. That can actually slow people down with a roundabout. Left-turning vehicles obscures outbound traffic for the right turns, too. So you've got just a visibility problem that you can make a lot better. And one of the ways that you can improve the efficiency as well is putting in a roundabout. People don't actually have to come to a stop very often when you put in a roundabout. And that's, you think, well, what happens if I have to slow down to five or, you know, ten miles an hour? Well, if you can keep it down, you know, to five, ten, fifteen miles an hour, your fuel economy and your brakes last longer. Everything's better if you can avoid that hard stop. Because when you hear, have that hard stop, you feel that little rock in your car where it comes to rocks back, that's causing wear on your car. The less you can stop, the better your car will be, the better the pavement, because when the car comes to a complete stop, you think about the rock you have in the car, think about what your tires are doing to the pavement. Because each time, it's like hitting them with a hammer. So if you can keep people from stopping or slowing down drastically in any situation, it improves pavement wear and safety. Just a, a kind of a picture of the different, a roundabout. One of the interesting things is a slip lane. Slip lanes are a little bit hinky for pedestrians. Pedestrians don't always like that because the, people can just go on through and they aren't always paying attention. However, if you want to address the capacity, this design for a roundabout, you will not lose any capacity, actually, you'll gain capacity out of the intersection. So by putting in a roundabout, you end up, it's safer, it's going to have more capacity, you don't have the stopping, and also, you, it's very, very difficult to T-bone someone in a roundabout. You actually have to go through the roundabout to, and not even turn, to hit someone and T-bone. And if you think about it, where the most dangerous place to get hit is on your left side. Why? Because there's always someone sitting in the driver's seat, right? Where you want to get hit is on the passenger side. And you want to get hit at the shallowest angle possible. That's what roundabouts let you do, is as you pull in, they're going to hit the side of you and glance off. So even when there are crashes, they're inherently less severe because of the orientation of the vehicles. This is just a, an overall collisions versus injury, fatal, and pedestrian collisions. Basically, everything for safety improves with a roundabout. The big one is that fatality. And what that's doing is that passenger door, it's hitting the passenger door and in front of it, and glancing off rather than having the ninety-degree impact that dissipates all of the energy into the vehicle. Imagine the two vehicles, they move and slide across and dissipate energy. I much prefer to have energy dissipated in skidding rather than in the side of my car. That's when it can kill people. The lower travel speeds are probably the best thing about roundabouts, is that you don't have to come to a stop, so people don't feel it's as bad as sitting at a signal. When you get to a signal, what are people doing anymore at signals? When you see them? They pull out their phones. It's becoming an epidemic. And that actually creates multiple problems, is when you're the first in line and you're texting, and the light turns green, that traffic sensor is going to still sense you being there and continue to give time to that direction even though you're not going. So that means you're actually affecting everyone around you, adding delay to the entire intersection. As that's been getting worse, roundabouts become more popular because there's no time to do the texting through it. It's a safe, smooth curve all the way through, and you don't have that time where people are stopped to do bad things in their cars. Is that pulling out the phone, playing with something else, turning around, those are the times when we stop paying attention, and those are when fatalities can occur. There's, and the other part is, people want to beat the light. And I'm, I'm guilty of this, too, is as I look up, I always want to make sure I don't see the red light as I'm going underneath it, but sometimes we do. But when we do that, if we're not paying attention and another person's not paying attention, that's almost always when the crashes occur. And roundabouts eliminate that, so you have that safety feature inherent, is you don't have a light to beat to add to the gas. Because my son, when he was Driver's Ed, he really thought going into it that yellow meant go even faster based on how his mom drives, because when she saw that yellow light, that accelerator went all the way down and she zipped through.
Apparently, she's not here tonight.
Well, my, my wife told me that if I wanted to go to, again, another degree, I had to do it with a different wife, and then she thought the police academy was another degree. So, it didn't always work that way. But the, uh, but the, so we don't have the lights to beat. One-way travel is another kind of neat thing about roundabouts, is you're always going around. It's impossible to have a head-on collision because everyone circles counterclockwise. The only way that you can have a head-on collision, if someone actually pulls into the wrong lane and passes do-not-enter signs. This, uh, head-on collisions, high fatality rate, we can just wipe those out and not have them because of the design in the roundabout. Vision is kind of really interesting in a roundabout, is that you don't have to look to your right, you can look to your left, and you're close to that window, you've got really good visibility on your left side. Your blind spot over here, as you're pulling up to the intersection approaching, your blind spot sits over here, you've got to turn your head, look all the way back. Roundabouts, you just get to look to the left, and you don't even have to look to a hard left, it's only looking over slightly to the left. And you see every single car that can come and run into you going through there, because they're all going to be coming from a shallow left. Bicycles can be accommodated as well. Sometimes we'll put in ramps. It's probably the best that people actually use the sidewalk and run through. Not everyone likes bicycles on the sidewalk. However, when, when you're on the sidewalk, you don't want the bicycles there, but when you're on the street, you don't want the bicycles there either. It's probably the safest to keep them on to the sidewalks, widened sidewalks, and then the worst thing that generally happens is someone gets scuffed knees if you have a pedestrian bike interaction. They have had fatalities, and I'm serious, they've had fatalities between bikes and pedestrians. So it's important that you have wider sidewalks, because people are biking more, and as they bike, they want to get somewhere, and then they're pedaling harder and faster. And here is the design for the roundabout. It, actually, all we have to do on the west side is realign a driveway. You don't have to actually take any property, I mean, that you would really need in this situation for a regular intersection. You would really need to swing the road out, so you have about a hundred feet straight on. And then you're into taking a lot of land and really reconfiguring things. This allows the roundabout to be built, takes a very minimal amount of existing property, and creates a much, much safer roadside environment. And I won't torture you anymore. I apologize if I bore you or not. But happy to answer any questions.
On the schematic here, how close is it going to be to the park? And is there, because I don't know what the codes mean. Are there crosswalks on here?
Yes.
Is that what those are, right there?
The little hash marks.
Little hash marks?
Yep.
And this is that stone drainage.
Hash marks on three sides.
Okay, so that's that, so then that, um...
Playground equipment's over here.
And what you can see...
Finding is over here, okay.
But it's got, so it's a, does this have a laser? Oh, there it is. So, um, I guess this one, I apologize over the top of your heads. You have the parking lot down there, you can see that in the drawing, um, in the schematic, and then you can also see the sidewalks connecting in. So you can look at the schematic and place where that will be. The majority of it will, it will come up and then bulge out onto the east side of the road rather than the west side.
Now, when this is developed, the school to the, to the right side, to leave the school parking lot, everybody's going to have to go north, and you're going to have to go through the roundabout to go back south?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
Because right now, when they come out, they can go left or right, right?
Well, left's a disaster.
Yeah, but they could, couldn't they? Almost impossible.
That one's, that's a crazy movement now, is, it's, it's far less than ideal the way it is now.
So if I, by, now, if I come out of the church parking lot, we're going to have to realign the church parking lot on the west side there.
A little bit.
Okay.
Very little.
They'll be able to go either way, okay.
Did KDOT recommend this as part of their, the, the trail project plan as well? That this should be part of it, or this should have been done?
Yeah, they, they recommend it because we'll have the trail back on the west side, we're going to cross it back over to the east side, and having that roundabout is going to make it safer for pedestrians and the bikers because of the speed slowdown, and pedestrian and biker can watch the cars as it goes.
And they're funding the majority of the project, and it's a safer thing, just like when we fixed the intersection of Rucker with Eight, with Eight Street. Trying to look into the sun, it was coming in at a tough angle, we straightened that out as the trail was done over there. So it increased the safety a great deal. So this is recommended not only by the comprehensive plan, but also by KDOT to make her safer area, especially right there with the school and with the park. So this wasn't just something that the commission just came up to throw some money at, it was actually done for a purpose. And I think there's people in the community that need to understand that.
Now you've got an unbelievable park, too.
Amazing. And it's only going to get busier.
Yeah.
So there's going to be more traffic, and we need to control things even more.
And it also helps alleviate traffic at Fifth and Eisenhower and Sixth and...
The new Walmart on McFarland Road, there's more traffic on McFarland as well, so there's, there's a lot of reasons for it.
And the other benefit is, twenty miles an hour tends to be the cutoff of fatalities with, if a pedestrian is hit. And pretty much everyone agrees that if you get hit above twenty, you've got a good chance of dying, less than twenty, you're probably going to live. Roundabouts, that inherent ten to fifteen miles an hour, you're hard-pressed to get through at twenty miles an hour. I mean, you've got to have both hands on the wheel and oddly enough, paying full attention in order to go through it at twenty. So you actually have an added safety feature that if they do manage to get through it at twenty at, or twenty-five at a dangerous speed, they're actually probably paying attention because they have to, to navigate the roundabout. So the chances of anyone going into that intersection as a pedestrian and getting seriously injured are drastically less than those with a, a standard intersections.
I think this lines up really well as being a community development block grant project.
That'd be the last item on the table tonight.
That we're going to, that we're going to talk about tonight as well, to get that paid for by outside dollars, a lot of it. Any further questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you for having me tonight.
Ed, my computer doesn't want to line up with the network for some reason tonight. Um, next item is appointment, consider the appointment of Abby Allen to be board of trustees of the Dorothy Branwich Public Library for the remaining, remainder of the library trustees, Stephanie Zimmerman's term, which expires on April thirty, twenty twenty.
Mayor and Commissioners, simply, uh, one person's resigning from the board, and the board recommends this appointment, and they try to find people that have a true interest in library to help it grow and...
She's a teacher in our community, does a great job, she would be tremendous. She helped with the, the survey project that we've, our city's really benefited from, so I think she'd be a great addition.
And her husband's a employee.
Right. Firefighter here in town. Any further comments or questions? Or a motion?
Make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the Dorothy Branwich Public Library Board of Trustees for Abby Allen to be appointed to the library, library board.
Second.
Then moved and second, is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Move on to new business, consideration to declare the police department barcode equipment as surplus and transfer the equipment to the Abilene Police Department. Chief Reese?
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, the police department seeks approval to declare barcoding equipment consisting of five Zebra printers, two wired scanners, one signature pad, and one wireless scanner as surplus property and transfer the equipment to the Abilene Police Department. The police department underwent New World Records Management System conversion in two thousand sixteen. A property room software module was purchased from New World as part of the conversion. Equipment related to the property room module was also purchased. In two thousand seventeen, the decision was made not to pursue the barcoding system with the property room module as it required duplication of work by the officers. The police department was given a credit from New World for the property room software module. The department was not able to return the related equipment for a refund. The extra equipment was purchased in two thousand seventeen. It is located in our lab and is unusable with the current system. The Abilene Police Department has contacted the police department in reference to the acquisition of the barcoding equipment. They are currently undergoing a New World Records Management System such as ours, and would like to, uh, the system conversion, and have purchased the property room module. Approval is sought, sought to transfer the equipment to the Abilene Police Department. The purchase price at the time was three thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. Estimated current replacement value is twenty-three sixty-seven. It is anticipated that the value of the two-year-old equipment would be significantly less. The equipment was purchased with asset forfeiture funds. The transfer of the equipment is an acceptable transfer under state and federal asset forfeiture rules. Staff recommends the declaration of the barcoding equipment as surplus property with the approval to transfer the barcoding equipment to the Abilene Police Department. I would be happy to answer any questions in reference to this.
Make a motion, we declare police department barcoding equipment as surplus and approve the transfer of equipment to the Abilene Police Department.
Second.
Then moved and second, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next item, consideration of the resolution R. twenty-eight ninety-four, special question to be placed on the November fifth, twenty nineteen ballot, for the imposition of a one percent sales tax for debt service relief in Junction City.
Mayor and Commissioners, our current debt service sales tax of one percent is set to expire December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty. This question that would appear on the ballot would simply be to extend that and begin January first, two thousand and twenty-one, and it'd be for ten years. This tax brings in an estimated three million, five hundred thousand dollars, so it is significant and important to our city. So, basically, if this does not pass, we would need to pursue other sources of revenue because it is so significant for our city.
And it goes specifically to debt relief?
Correct.
We're not using that to throw at other projects or buying stuff and, other than all, it goes right to debt?
No, correct. Set aside into debt service.
Mr. Mayor, yeah, as you said, three and a half million. Our total debt payment each year, in general obligation debt, and also money owed to KDOT, which was for a street project, street stuff back in the buildup day, um, we spent about eleven million dollars a year in debt service. So the three and a half million is just a part of the whole solution, important part, because if that wouldn't happen, you'd have to raise, even at the, the current mill, for this year, we've gotten, it'd be a minimum of twenty mils if it doesn't pass. The reason why we're, we're suggesting, recommending we put it on the ballot this year, we have a general election to fall for ci, for city and school elections, be a good time to get people to the polls. Our next option without having a special election would be next August during the primary, and there may not be much happening in the primary, who knows by then. We cannot wait till the November election of twenty twenty, that general election then, when we'll have presidential election, because if you do, the state makes you wait three months, so you'd actually have a, a gap there of, of three months in your sales tax, you'd be dropping it and get it back on in three months, which makes no sense. So, um, the idea was to put it on the ballot this fall, and there's no problem in doing that as well.
Right.
It's the most equitable way to distribute the burden for everyone, even those from out of town, so.
It has, you know, um, the debt, you know, I've been here now four and a half years. The general obligation debt was roughly a hundred and fourteen million dollars when I started in January of fifteen. No magic, I mean, it's, it's, as we know, it's, it's everybody in town pitching together, making it all happen. Our general obligation debt after this year is going to be in the mid-seventies, millions. Still way too high, but a far cry from where it was, and you've got to remember, the hundred and fourteen is a lot less than it was before that. So it's, it's been a good approach the city has used to address the situation to move forward.
Our highest payments were, I believe, over fourteen million, I believe, when I first started. So they were huge. Still not great, but definitely an improvement.
Yes. Well, and, and, and by having the sales tax, you've been able to, you know, through refinancing of bonds, we've been able to lower annual debt payments a little bit. Our annual debt payment for next year is about three hundred thousand less than last year. And that got lowered by five hundred thousand when we refinanced in twenty sixteen. So it's all the things that have to work together. Every year we pay off, um, we now, like a house payment, the further you get into it, the more you pay off in principal, the less you pay in interest. But every year, we seem like we're going to knock down our total debt obligation, about three, four hundred thousand dollars, which now means that's money can be used to, to keep funding all the other things we do in the city, like fixing streets and doing those things. So it's that balanced program we've got, and that's why it's so important. But it starts tonight with, um, putting on, having the commissioners put it on the ballot.
Now, the last thing we want to see is people's property taxes going up, so this is the best way to, to do it, so everybody can help, help with that, so.
I recall the twenty-eleven election was pretty much overwhelming in favor of this, too.
Yeah, it was actually twenty-two, I believe.
It was a, it was a must-do thing, because the city was really financial straits and is much more solvent than it was back then.
Well, City employees and all that kind of thing.
Commissioner, I think also the proof's in the pudding, the fact that, and I was not in this town when that was passed, I mean, but I remember hearing about it, you know, if you wouldn't have passed it, property tax would have had to go way up.
Oh, yeah.
The property tax in this community, by putting that in place, has held, other than that one jump way back in...
The first year.
Eleven twelve.
Twenty-twelve, we had to raise it two mils.
Instead, our property tax...
We knocked it back down two mils the next year.
Has not, has not changed. And our valuation really hasn't grown much, we've, we've operated, but if we wouldn't have had that, it would have been jumped up.
Right.
No, undoubtedly, it's important. Um, I make a motion, we approve resolution R. two-eight-nine-four for the calling of special question on the November twenty nineteen election for a one percent citywide sales tax increase for debt services.
I'll second that.
Is that an increase or a continuation?
It's basically a continuation.
A renewal.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure that we have it worded right.
It's not on top of the current.
The other one actually dies.
Right.
In sunset.
Okay.
And this will start the next day.
Making sure our wording was correct.
It's a renewal.
Yep.
And I'll second that.
Then moved and second, is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. I think it also shows that the city commission and the city staff have done a really good job protecting finances as well. We, I mean, I think that's, that's a big thing. We, we did what we said we were going to do, we're going to pay down the debt, we're going to keep things as, as low as we can, so that's a good thing. Next item is consideration of resolution R. twenty-eight ninety-five, setting a public hearing date of August sixth, twenty nineteen, to address condemnation of one oh-two South Webster Street.
Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, uh, coming for you tonight to set a hearing for the property located at one oh-two South Webster. Uh, primary structure is located at one oh-two South Webster, has found to have dangerous, unsafe conditions. Uh, the steel siding is loose, the north side of the structure, uh, with peeling paint. The garage window on the north side is broken, all windows on the structure have exposed wood. Uh, there's deteriorating fascia, there's bare wood exposed, the soffits have peeling paint, the gutters are full of debris, and the rear patio has pretty much collapsed into the framework and deteriorated. We request a hearing for this property.
The only question I had for that one for you, um, all the other ones indicated they weren't occupied, this one is an unoccupied structure now or not?
They are unoccupied, as far as I know.
Thank you for including the photographs in the packet, that's very helpful.
Yes.
The first thing I looked for.
Yeah. So I didn't have to drive around.
It helps to digest the information a lot better.
Appreciate that.
Any further questions for Chief Johnson? Your motion?
I make a motion to approve resolution number R. dash twenty-eight ninety-five, setting a public hearing date of August the sixth, two thousand and nineteen, to address the con, condemnation of one oh-two South Webster. of August 6, 2019, to address the condemnation of 102 South Webster Street.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item is consideration of Resolution R-2896, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 125 East Elm Street.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the primary structure located at 125 East Elm is found to have dangerous and unsafe conditions. The foundation is deteriorated, causing the load walls to drop. There are holes in the siding, several broken windows, doors are unsecured, framing has settled from deterioration. There is water damage throughout the roof, and the rear porch has fallen in. The soffit and fascia is deteriorated, and the porch and framing has failed due to damage. There is a accessory building that meets criteria of dangerous unsafe structures as well. We would like the complete property to be put on for a hearing.
Any further discussion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2896, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 125 East Elm Street.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item is consideration of Resolution R-2897, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 336 West Seventeenth Street.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the primary structure located at 336 West Seventeenth Street is found to have dangerous unsafe conditions. The foundation is settling with large cracks. There is loose vinyl siding, holes in the siding, and deterioration. There are broken windows. The framing around the doors, windows, is deteriorated. There are no gutters. The roof on the north side has fallen in, and there is deterioration. The front porch is settling and deteriorated. The detached shed at this location is in worse shape than the primary structure. Again, we ask for a hearing on August 6.
Any questions for Chief?
Chief, on these, like that one secondary structure, is it a danger for neighboring kids to go there now and hurt themselves?
Quite possibly, yes.
You know, the city does have to write, have to, so I asked to answer here. When the chief ever, the chief of the building department ever finds something that's dangerous and they feel it be a hazard to the neighborhood, they have the authority under our code to order immediately to tear it down without a hearing. It would have to be something like this or worse, but just if we ever have something that is a total danger, you're worried about safety of the neighbors and kids and everything else, he does have that ability. Not that I'm saying you need to do it, but I just wanted to inform that it can happen down the road if he ever needs to be.
And as we come across these, there are a couple that I think we've already, I know there's one small shed that we tore down. It nails were everywhere, so.
Any further discussion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2897, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 336 West Seventeenth Street.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item is consideration of Resolution R-2898, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 523 West Fourteenth Street. Chief?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the primary structure located at 523 West 114th Street, 14th Street, I'm sorry, on the paper it says 114, is found to have dangerous and unsafe conditions. The foundation is settling, deteriorating, the mortar is missing, exterior walls are missing pieces and has holes, deterioration and water damage. There are some missing windows and others that are broken. The frame on most of the windows are deteriorated. There are no gutters. The soffits and fascia is deteriorated. The front porch landing slopes towards the structure, allowing water to drain against the structure. Again, we ask for a hearing on August 6.
Any questions?
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2898, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 523 West Fourteenth Street.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item is consideration of Resolution R-2900, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 324 West Eleventh Street.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the detached shed located at 324 West Eleventh is found to be dangerous unsafe conditions. There doesn't appear to be a foundation for this structure. Looks like there was just piers supporting the post. There is water damage and rotten deterioration of materials. Windows have rotten and the framework is broken and deteriorated. There are no gutters. The soffit and fascia is deteriorating and rotten, and the lean has deteriorated, the framing, and decayed, has decayed and rotten materials throughout.
This one's just the auxiliary structure, correct?
Yes, sir, just the accessory structure.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2900, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 324 West Eleventh Street, the auxiliary building.
Yeah, second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. And last but not least, consideration of Resolution R-2901, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 335 West Fifteenth Street.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, the primary structure located at 335 West Fifteenth Street is found to have dangerous and unsafe conditions. There is deterioration settling and mortar missing from the foundation. There are holes, missing pieces, water damage and deterioration on the exterior walls. Windows are missing. The frames are rotting and deteriorating. The roof is missing shingles. There are no gutters. The soffits and fascia are rotting, and deterioration on the porch and decks also requires mortar. Again, we ask for an August 6 hearing.
I make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-2901, setting a public hearing date of August 6, 2019, to address condemnation of 335 West Fifteenth Street.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
We appreciate your aggressive response on these.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Next item, consideration of the KDOT C-Clips resurfacing project agreement. Mr. Ibarra.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we're here to, for consideration approval of the KDOT C-Clip resurfacing program agreement number 57-31-U-2360-1. On August 27, 2018, the city received approval from KDOT for the C-Clip, which is a city connecting link improvement program for surface preservation project for K-57 from Washington Street to Jackson Street, and then for the pavement restoration project at K-57 at the Jackson intersection. The C-Clip program is a 90/10 match, and KDOT's maximum amount for the surface preservation is $300,000, and the maximum amount for the pavement restoration is $200,000, for a total of KDOT's reimbursement cost not to exceed $500,000. The city will be responsible 10% of the construction costs and nonparticipating costs for this project. Funding could come either out of the street fund, the federal exchange fund, or the special highway fund, and so staff recommends the approval of the KDOT C-Clip resurfacing project agreement number 57-31-U-2360-1. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that this commission may have.
This will complete Washington Street, all the way up to, I mean, is all part of the project, right?
Correct.
40 and 57 and all that stuff?
Where we stopped off on the connecting length at Home Street. We'll go from Home Street all the way--
Right.
--to the intersection at Grant and Washington, and from there, we will head to the west on 18th Street, all the way to Jackson.
It's been a dramatic improvement.
So from Jackson to Washington, Washington, all the way south to the roundabout, and there's one little block from Washington to Jefferson, or to Franklin.
Yeah, Sixth Street.
Will all be less than three, four years old.
Right. We can't say that about too many streets in our town. That's a good thing.
And only 10% cost.
10%.
Well, even with the clinks before, that was 50%, but we did it for, yeah.
Right. Very good. So we're going to go to bed soon on this?
Yes, we are looking for, with KDOT's schedule, we are supposed to go out for bed in December.
December for--
Mm-hmm. December of 2019.
Good. Any questions for Mr. Ibarra? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the KDOT C-Clip resurfacing project agreement as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Next item, consideration of Resolution R-2902, authorizing signatures for the Federal Reserve Pledgey Agreement and Authorization. Ms. Miller?
Mayor, Commissioners, we simply need to update our authorized signature for our Federal Reserve security pledges, and so we just need to get approval for this resolution, which gives you permission to sign off on the forms to update the signatures, so we can change the security pledges as needed.
Questions for Ms. Miller?
I make a motion to approve Resolution R-2902 as recommended by staff.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item, consideration of renewing the employee health insurance plan with Freedom Claims Management and Blue Cross Blue Shield of Kansas for a period beginning August 1, 2019.
Mayor, this is Julie Yarmar. You've met her before from Freedom Claims Management. As you know, our plan renews August 1, and Julie has information on our renewal.
On the renewal with Blue Cross and Blue Shield that renews August 1st, the umbrella policy that the employer has purchased, the city has purchased, has gone up less than 1%. So the employee benefits that you've given back to the employees with a very minimal out-of-pocket, so we'll be able to go into our fourth year with no change in benefits and no increase to the employees out of pocket. So it's been a win-win situation for both the city and for the employees.
Good.
So at this time, we're asking for the renewal of the Blue Cross and Blue Shield and the Freedom Claims Plan, and because it has worked again going into the fourth year with no changes.
What that means to us is, from a budget standpoint, when Lindsey and I sit down doing budget and you see tomorrow night, it's zero. But let's don't forget that the employee pays for a share of the single, as they pay for all the family share and everything else. So for four years, the employee receives the same coverage, same benefits, and they have not to spend any more money. If it went up 5%, they'd be paying 5% more. I know there's other places in town that are going up 150 bucks for a family insurance. If you get, if you've got even a large raise, that usually wouldn't cover it, so you go south on money. So not only does it save city money, it saves this. And as we said before, we've been getting some refunds from Blue Cross as well, because Blue Cross always, we always kid that they don't even see our employees, basically, they handle claims, until they meet the 6350.
6350 for the umbrella policy.
Umbrella policy. So really, Blue Cross only pays claim, I think we have, did we have eight this year over?
Yes, you did.
We were higher this year. We had eight over 25,000, and that was high for us. But there were 147 employees, and all the family members down here never cussed a 6350, so the city insured that at a cheaper rate to buy the high dollar, that high deductible premium. It's worked like a champ for us. And as you know, I was involved with this plan in their city before I got our similar plan, and they're on their eighth year, we figured today, and the same plan. I don't know what theirs has done, but, you know, four years here, we're in our fourth year, and no changes.
Any further questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the plan for the year beginning on August 1, 2019, as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Thank you very much.
All right, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, thank you, and we look forward to another prosperous year.
Yep, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Next item, consideration of the request to dispose of surplus property currently stored in the basement of City Hall.
Mayor, Commissioners, it's simply that we have a room in the basement at City Hall that's kind of become an overflow room of just miscellaneous furniture and office parts that people don't need, and we just want to get it cleaned up and disposed of. We have opened it up to all the departments throughout the city to see if they can make use of it. Anything that they could use, they've taken, so basically, we'd just like to get it cleaned up.
We got furniture from Motel, I don't know what we all--
So how do you propose disposing of it, just out of curiosity?
I would say it just kind of depends on the items. If we can recycle, like anything that's scrap metal, we would do that, or otherwise, we'd probably donate it somewhere. Well, I don't know about donated, or if it has that kind of value, but--
Bonfire.
[laughing].
Any further questions?
Make a motion. We approve the disposal of surplus property currently stored in the basement at City Hall as recommended by city staff.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Next item, consideration of the development agreement with USD 475. Mr. Dickel?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I did have a couple typos on the memo, so I'll go through everything in the agreement. This agreement that we've been working with with the school district since last fall, a lot of discussion on it. Initially, the thought was on the roundabout, which we got the KDOT funding for, was the district would pay for some of it, we'd pay for a small, maybe none of it, and then on the third, on the street, Blue J Way, as known for the first half mile, we require a 31-foot street, and we'd pay the difference, or about $250,000. We've always agreed, too, that on the water line, they need an eight-inch water line, that's what we require by codes, to put in their eight-inch water line. We want a 16, because our plans are to not only do the half mile of 16, but go all the way to Rucker on a 16 to do a loop in that part of town, which is, could solve a lot of problems we have in the area and flow, and hopefully some future growth of the city would be enhanced by it. So the big issue was, is how to divide it out. We came to an agreement, the school board approved it last night, where the school district will pay for a 41-foot wide Blue J Way, along with the 10-foot sidewalk to the side, and the city will take care of the local costs of the roundabout, up to $250,000. Local costs will be construction engineering, land acquisition, that'd be basically, basically. That'll be part of our cost, and if it goes over 250, the school district will pay for that difference, over 250. The grant is for up to 1.25 million for construction costs. If it exceeds that amount, that also will be a cost of the school districts. So, and then on the water line, we're going to pay for 34.5% of the water line cost for that first half mile. Of course, the second half mile is all our cost, and it should be, of course. So this is exactly what we kind of worked from the beginning, you know, and it's not unusual for a city, and I'm sure you've done it before, when you build something and you when you build something and you require the contractor or developer to put X in, and you want to be Y, you pay the difference because it's long-term and future. And there's no reason, you can't require them to put Y in. So I think it's a great agreement. Worked with the district through it. A few bumps and bruises along the way here, but I feel happy with it. And it, one, it pays for the share the city should pay for. It pays for the share the school should pay for. And it limits the city's liability.
And those additional dollars for the roundabout, we're looking to apply for a build grant as well.
Right.
So that hopefully we won't have any dollars out at all.
We mean, yeah, the city will be applying for a build grant in July. And the build grant, and, to the federal government, correct? The build grants to the federal government, right, Leon? Yeah. We want to do more enhancements, like, hopefully if we get the grant, we can extend Blue J Way all the way to Rucker Road. So it'd be go both, you'd just go and go both north and south. We're also anticipating extending Rucker Road in a 41-foot wide concrete from where it ends now to the Munson Road line. And then address me Munson Road as well. And so we can get all in there. And the grant's possibility, again, you never know what, who's all in the application pool for a grant. There was a grant in the city west of here last year, got funded, that I think our application's going to be a strong. But again, I don't know who's all applying to show what the projects are. So we're trying to look at every avenue to cut those costs. But by signing this agreement tonight, we can start moving forward with the projects and keep everything on track for the school opening.
Does that build grant include the water as well?
No. It's only roads.
It's roads, it's transportation.
Roads and sidewalks.
Yeah.
And lighting. So it's a really good deal. Push every button we can to use outside dollars to pay for things. Any further questions?
Make a motion, we approve the development agreement with USD 475.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five zero. Last item, consider projects for the application of the 2020 Community Development Block Grant.
Mayor, Commissioners, of course, there's other projects available. We need to find a project that, to use the survey results that we had a few years ago, that serves the whole community. I think Mr. Coon gave a wonderful presentation before on the need for the roundabout there, and why we want a roundabout there. If the commission approves, move forward with that project. We'll work with Northwest Kansas Plan Development again, like we had last couple of years, to make application. And we'll probably apply for nearly $700,000, or half of the project. The project this spring was kind of estimated a little bit over 1 million. And so, you know, we do half, up to $700,000. So a great way to get the project done, this spring when we had the bids, we would have paid for the whole, 100% of it. This would be outside money coming in and fixing the real need in the community. So my recommendation to the commission is real simple, especially after what I heard tonight, is that you give us permission to move forward with the Eisenhower-McFarlane Roundabout as a CBG grant application for this year.
I think it's a huge safety need in our town going forward. So I think that's one of the best projects that there is available.
We'll have those slides available. If anybody wants to see the slides, or I think it was a great presentation tonight. So Jim Down, you caught him, Jim, the slides?
Yeah, I've got a copy of it on the computer.
He got a copy of them. So we'll have slides available that any group wants to see now. We'll have them available, because I thought the presentation I really hit home.
Yep.
Do I need a motion or anything, or just?
Yes, please.
I make a motion, we move forward with applying for the CBD, CBDG grant for the roundabout project.
It's not CBD oil.
Yeah.
CBDG.
CBDG.
Community Development Block Grant.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
It's been moved in second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
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 All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Yeah.
Healthy agenda tonight. You guys did a great job getting through things. Commissioner comments? Commissioner Brown?
I think, Mayor, I've got a Flynn Hills Regional Council meeting this Friday. Went to the executive board meeting Monday night. And there's some discussion. Alan, are you aware of a housing study? Well, Bunsey and Pot County are going to, are involved in a housing study right now with the Flynn Hills Regional Council.
Yeah.
And they're trying to get Gary and Riley. It's a 90/10 funding that is offered by the Office of Economic Adjustment.
Lindsey and I attended the meeting in Manhattan.
And it's for next year, I guess, maybe Riley and Gary. You guys aware of that?
Yes, we went to a meeting.
Apparently, they hired, the Flynn Hills Regional Council, Abilene hired them to do a comprehensive plan. They got turned down by Milford and Ramby Plaza for comprehensive plans. They didn't, apparently decided not to use their services. They did pull in $1,275 during a, one of those match things with Wamego Chamber, I believe.
Yeah, Pot County, yeah.
Yeah, they made $1,275.
There's a foundation over there, yeah.
Yeah, cool deal. You know, I talked a while back about the dark store theory with the taxation issue. Everybody was kind of talking about this at the executive board meeting the other night. Apparently, Cabellos in Kansas City, which obviously is the KCK, if you had not heard, was approved a 50 cent, 50% reduction in their taxation by the state taxation board, made up of three members appointed by the governor, I believe. Is that correct, Alan?
Yeah, it's BODA.
And that's freaking a lot of people out. Because Pot County and Riley County have a lot of projects over there that are fighting, are signing on to this dark store theory process. And apparently, all the Walmarts are tied up in a lawsuit down in, they filed one down in Johnson County with the Walmart down there in hopes of a successful dark store theories down there. And then they were going to do the same thing throughout the state. So we've got a Walmart here. So that would be another thing that they would look to maybe do, is that 50% reduction in their taxation, I don't, which is have to be a significant blow to Gary County and Junction City.
Well, it would be, because those commercial properties are assessed at 25% of the appraised.
Yeah.
So if you lowered a million dollars, you've lost $250,000 of appraised value, of assessed value.
I don't know where they came up with this reduction for 50 cent for Cabellos, but like I said, it's got a lot of people freaking out.
We do, you know, of course, as the county has, as the county clerk has mentioned, and I'll mention it by night in our budget session, is, you know, there's three piece, three large pieces of property in this community that are being appealed at this time, which could affect evaluation a little bit. And I'll go through one tomorrow night and explain more. But there's, not quite to these levels, of course, but they're there.
We probably would have Foot Locker, probably Walmart.
Those aren't the three that are involved this year.
But it's just, you know, so that's really gaining some ground. And I think part of it's because I think the political makeup of this board or something is really...
I think it shows that a city and a community has to try to find, and we just talked about sales tax tonight. You have a diversified tax approach. You don't rely just on property taxes. You don't rely just on sales taxes. We do transfer some of our utilities into the general fund to finance government, and you use this three-legged approach.
Anyway, like I said, I've got Flynn Hills Regional meeting on Friday. I don't have anything else, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Albritton, you have anything for us tonight?
No, I'll forego most of my comments for next meeting. And I'll see everybody tomorrow. And that's all I have.
Thank you for joining us tonight. Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things coming up in regards to military this Friday. Well, there's been a lot of change of commands on Fort. DeVarte is still under change of command this Friday at Cavalry Parade Field at 10 o'clock. Also, the following Friday, on the 28th, at 10, is the monthly, Fort Riley Monthly Retirement Ceremony. So all the soldiers and civilians that are retiring and choose to go to that retirement ceremony, we have the opportunity to meet them and find out if they're staying in our area or going somewhere else. Looking forward to budget sessions. I know you guys have done a tremendous job getting all that together. As far as the look of our community and everything, I've had several people comment about, hey, what are we doing downtown with the sidewalks and everything? So it's good that people are noticing that effort is being taken to, you know, improve the looks of our community. And which, to me, that all ties into just the beautification in general. So again, every Saturday, volunteer project to do cleanup projects. So anybody interested, 8 o'clock, we meet at parking lot at Cadeau's on Chestnut Street. And last thing I'd like to say is, I do kind of keep a look on how our flower baskets are looking downtown. And they are still looking good. And I've been told that they will eventually start overflowing. So I'm looking forward to seeing them. And I do appreciate the city on Fridays taking the time to get, or every day, to get them watered. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yep. MPO meets tomorrow, so I'll have that. Chamber meets next week. ATA bus met last week. They're starting to reevaluate the routes here in Junction City and Gary County. And they're continuing to work with our major employers on getting bus routes, you know, in efficient positions and the routes in place to get people to work here in Junction and along Old 40 and out to Foot Locker and Armour and that sort of thing. So they're working with those employers and starting to expand and move in our area. So that's a really good thing. Other than that, nothing.
Very good. Thank you. The EDC meeting will be held this Thursday morning. It's been delayed a couple weeks because the EDC director's been at some meetings and stuff. I don't really have much tonight. Go ahead and move on, Mr. Nickle.
Okay. Thank you. Last meeting, of course, we talked about CAMSO and gave them their incentive money that we had promised. I'm talking to John Lawrence. The good part about CAMSO is, a large portion, nearly half of their employees are military employees. You know, that's always one thing that this community tries to strive is, Commissioner Fitzgerald talked about retirees or getting out of the Army, is having jobs here for them. And of course, with John Lawrence being the HR out there, it's probably helping. But we're seeing exactly the things that we want to do in this community are happening with that. So I'm very optimistic the future of that. Had this traffic demo with the MPO here in the corner last weekend. And then now we've got one over here, this building go across. As a city staff member, I love anything to slow traffic down through here and pedestrians are getting out of cars. So, you know, we may have looked some long-term developments, see if funds available to do that, to do what they did with Cohen or this little post last week. So it really worked out well. Did get a question about Spring Valley Road project yesterday. Of course, it's going to go to bid probably later this fall. Got the Grand Ford. There was a question about the city's right-of-way on Spring Valley Road. The city has a public right-of-way of 80-foot wide on Spring Valley Road. So those that live on the west side of Spring Valley Road that are not residents of the city, that's because outside of the city limits. The road right-of-way and 40-foot in, basically from the center road, is city-owned. And a long time ago, nothing there was some question about that from one of the property owners through the county. But it is, it is city road. We did check it today and checked with Troy at the county. So if you hear anything about it, it is, you know, the city has a 40-foot, 80-foot right-of-way, not an easement, a right-of-way, the whole length from...
Rucker Road to 040.
040, yeah.
It's on the west side of Spring Valley.
Well, the east side is always, is all annexed. The west side from Liberty Hall Road north to Wildcat is not annexed. Okay? But there was a question about that, but it's all there. No problem with that. Question, of course, I applaud Chief Johnson in the change-making in the building codes department on getting to these houses. Yes, we did six houses tonight. We have three of them that you approved bids for earlier. Even though in his memo, he put he could cut to 10,000, we're averaging closer to $4,000 per demo. We have $40,000 budget. So of course, the goal is to make serious impact and clean the town up. And I think a good start. And again, as you did before, applaud the chief for the pictures tonight. And I think those are obvious ones.